Chairman.
I'm okay.
Welcome back to our morning session, February eighteenth. Our next agenda item is our county coroner's gonna give us his twenty twenty-four annual report.
Thank you.
Barbara, you're on.
Thank you very much. So I've got the annual report and I've also got a quarterly report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. I'll just, twenty twenty-four annual report, I think y'all have a copy. It's pretty lengthy, it's pretty much the same as format that I've used in the past. I did update a couple of things. But basically, the bottom line, we've seen a little bit of decrease in the types of deaths that are, that we're experiencing here in Valley County. One is drug deaths, which is, it's a nice trend to see the fentanyl overdose and opioid overdose is basically dropping. What's alarming is all those that are dying of those are younger, 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 every year. Just trying to figure out how in the heck are they getting this stuff? We, I mean, we know it's coming from the South, but so that's been a, of course, that's not really under my realm, but it's just interesting, just the statistics to look at and see that those younger folks are getting the fentanyl and even carfentanil, that's the biggest concern, is we're seeing carfentanil.
What is, what is that, Scott?
Carfentanil is, is a, it's a derivative of fentanyl, but it's, it's a hundred times stronger than fentanyl.
What?
So they add a couple of molecules, a couple of hydrogen molecules, add a, and a carbon, and it makes it a hundred times stronger. Carfentanil is basically a elephant, well, a large, large, large animal analgesic or sedative. And it's just like fentanyl, it's, it's synthetic, it's made in most of the illicit carfentanil is made in, well, all illicit carfentanil is made in labs, mostly in China and Mexico. It's really super cheap to make. It's being mixed with methamphetamine and fentanyl and heroin, just give it that extra little kick. Plus, it's a good filler because it's, it's even added to cocaine sometimes. I was, just had a meeting with the DEA last, well, during our conference, we had a breakout session with the DEA. And one of the things that he was saying is that, that it could, the carfentanil is cheaper to make than fentanyl, even though it's a hundred times stronger. So that's a real concern for them. Thank goodness, we haven't seen a lot here, eastern, southeastern Idaho, northern Utah, they're seeing a huge increase. Not sure why, but that's, it's one of those things that's going that way.
I don't mind what Dee Dee was talking about, that next one coming.
Yeah. It's a scary, scary prospect to see. So in twenty twenty-four, this number may change. We don't have the exact statistics from Department of Health and Welfare. July one of last year, we moved, we changed to a new, supposed to be better, more efficient reporting system, death registration reporting system. But it's not fully, there's still a few bugs to work out. It's not fully reported yet. As far as I could tell, from all of the death certificates that I had to review, cremation authorizations I had to review, our own county deaths to my funeral home, that I've worked on, with the other hat that I wear. Best we can tell with final records is we had ninety-eight deaths that occurred in Valley County. Of those deaths, forty-eight were reported to the Valley County Coroner's Office by either hospital medical staff or law enforcement. And we provided, each of, each of our offices provided different, very, various degrees of investigative services for those deaths. Out of those forty-eight, I release jurisdiction, or we call it NJR, which is called a non-jurisdictional release of five of those cases, basically because it was referred to us, it was a natural death, and the doctor would sign the death certificate. And it was nothing suspicious, accidental, or nefarious about that death. So out of those forty-eight, forty-three, I did take jurisdiction. And out of those forty-eight, just kind of running through the stats here, sixteen were autopsied. We, I'll come back to the number of deaths, deaths being autopsied in just a minute. So out of those forty-three that I accepted jurisdiction, twenty-three were natural deaths, and fifteen were accidental. And then we had one suicide, and there was one homicide in twenty twenty-four. We had one case that is still pending, and we're not sure how long it's gonna be before we get those results. He just died in December, so it's gonna be a little, little bit longer, I think, to get that. And then there were two that were classified as undetermined. Undetermined is a tough one for us because after a thorough investigation, medical legal investigation, legal investigation, medical investigation, we just couldn't figure out why this gentleman died, two of these, both of these gentlemen died. And it's, 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 it's really super hard because one of them is really young, a younger man. And it family, it's really hard for the families too, because you can't tell them, you can suspect. One was a, one example, one of these cases was a gentleman that was found up in the Deadwood Reservoir, camping up there. Lots of, there's not a lot of medical history, there's a little bit, but he didn't drown. And if he was found in the water, we would assume drowning, that's just kind of what we do. But after a thorough examination and much, much discussion with several pathologists and forensic, well, forensic pathologists and pulmonologists, we just determined that it was just, he didn't drown, but we don't know why.
When they, can they tell, I mean, like if a guy's heart just stops, can, can they tell?
Yes and no. If it, if it stopped because of an infarct or a death of the heart muscle, we call that myocardial obstruction or a heart attack. Most commonly called a heart attack. We can see the, at autopsy, we can see the, the death of that tissue, it's necrotic tissue. It, it, it's, it's very visible. Or if it's waterlogged, if there's, if there's, if there's water in the heart, that's a, that's a, that's another issue. But in the lungs especially, but this case, nothing was there. There was no water in his lungs, in his airway, in his sinuses, his perineal sinuses. Just one of those things that just.
Will you talk to me about the accidents that were on the highway? It appears that we had quite a number. Is that an increase/decrease working with Idaho transportation departments on the safety of our quarter?
It's an increase. It's an increase over the last several years. There was, I think, when I first was appointed, there was, there was like a rash of crashes, but they were, they were more, they were truly accidental, non-related to alcohol, maybe a couple of them were, but these latest ones, alcohol and illicit drugs.
And it looks like no seat belts.
None of them have seat belts. Almost every, I can almost tell you every single, almost every single crash, and that's part of the statistics that we report to the department licensing and department transportation. Almost, well, all of them don't have seat belts, none of them wear seat belts, don't know why. That's, you know, and to be honest, I, and I don't sell this publicly, but I mean.
Well, you are in the public, so.
I am in the public, but I mean, I don't share this with everybody. They ask me, I tell them, but it wouldn't have mattered in these cases. Cause of death would have been what it is, but seat belts certainly help, but in these cases.
Keep you in the vehicle.
Yeah, keeps you in the vehicle. That's, that's important. These, all these deaths that, that occurred, none of them had seat belts, not a single one. So we do report that, and that's some part of my autopsy report or coroner's report, and then as well as my final, final reporting.
I'd be curious to know from our road department, I think, are they able to do that satellite, they'll tell me vehicles are on this highway now? I'd be curious to see what that is over the last three or five years.
Troubling, the two cases, the, the most recent, two of the most recent cases that happened just right here south of Cascade, I'm sorry, north of Cascade, they were both very, there was a lot of drugs involved, there was just, oh, everything from meth to heroin and alcohol, fentanyl on one of them. So that's a troubling, that's a troubling.
It's troubling that they're driving also, we all need to be very extra careful, because you don't know what's coming at you or what they are on or.
Yeah, and I feel, you know, two of them involved two other vehicles and, and construction worker while the driver was semi-truck, pulling that gravel trailer. This poor kid, it just, you know, shatters his whole life, so. Statistics by month, it's, it's on the next, it's kind of on the next page. Every month, there was, there was, I had at least a case every single month. February last year was super busy, I had seven, March seven cases. October, I had one case, so just kind of go through that. Statistics there, autopsy status. Out of the autopsies that we did, the sixteen examinations, seven were accidental, five were natural. And the two, two of those were undetermined, as I mentioned, one was a homicide, and then the other one's pending as, as we speak still. So hopefully we'll get, be able to find out that last one, it won't stay pending or undetermined. And then just kind of, just some kind of other manner of age, manner of death by age, just kind of shows through the, there were six females and seventeen males that were, that were accidental. Suicide, there was just one male, homicide was one male, undetermined were both males. And then their ages there. Plane crashes, last year we've had, there were several deaths due to plane crashes. As I was going through, interestingly, as I was going through cases since two thousand, I had to go back to through two thousand for the Ada County Coroner's Office, because there's specimens that they're holding. And we need to get, some of those don't need to be held any longer. I, I look back, there's consistently been three to four plane crashes a year, fatal plane crashes in Valley County. I don't know what that is, just, and they're all backcountry, they're, well, except for one.
If you're out of the backcountry, you're gonna have a chance.
Yeah, chances are higher, but there was one here in Cascade, but they're all, and, and they've all been males. Except for one passenger was a female, husband and wife, but the rest of them are all males, which is interesting. So we had the, the plane crashes, snowmobile crashes, gosh.
That's way too many.
It's just way too many, and it's going up. All but, we don't know about this last one, from our local gentleman, but all the other plane, snowmobile crashes, this is twenty twenty-four, I haven't gotten twenty twenty-five statistics yet, twenty twenty-four, all of them had alcohol onboard.
Oh, no doubt.
The highest level was point three-two, which is a lot. I think the lowest level was point nine, point zero-nine, I'm sorry, which is above the legal limit anyway, so. And then all the, the motor vehicle crashes had alcohol involved as well. And other, other type of drugs. So I just call it mixed drug intoxication. Some of those drugs included MDMA, methamphetamine, amphetamine, buprenorphine, carfentanil, fentanyl, and marijuana. Those are just some of the drugs that we're seeing. Heroin, not last year, thank goodness, but the year before.
I got a question for you, I mean, I appreciate your report, I mean, it's pretty in-depth, I've read most of it there. But when you're talking about these car crashes and, you know, vehicle crashes and stuff that these people are, are under the influence of drugs, say if our sheriffs or ISP pull them over, there's no way to tell if a person's on drugs, other than their, their own personal training. But is there a way for them, because, you know, you do, they have alcohol breath lives they have to breathe into if they're, they know they're drunk. But how do they tell with drugs, or can they?
They're, they're can, and, and that's a really good question for law enforcement, but my experience with them is obviously if they're hallucinating or acting different, different drugs are gonna, uppers, obviously you're gonna, you're gonna be real jittery and and the downers, obviously you're gonna be kind of real slow to react, and your responses are gonna be very slow. You know, we look at bloodshot eyes, we look, you know, obviously smell, odors from our mouth, breath, or even on the body. Law enforcement, they're specially trained, I, I mean, now that we have a canine, I think that's amazing, to smell those things that we can't.
Oh, yeah.
Smell it in their, in their cars. Interestingly, we found drugs in both of those cars too. Not only was it in their system, but it was also in some paraphernalia and actually some drugs in their cars.
Well, just a question I was asking.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, something that they look at, I'm sure every car that they pull over, I'm sure they, a couple of times I've been pulled over, even me, they, they know who I am for the most part, but they still wanna make sure I'm not drinking or driving, and they ask me, have you been drinking tonight? No, was just speeding or not paying attention, hit the line or whatever, so. But they, they're aware of that, I know they are, and they look at that. Another interesting fact about seat belts, all three plane crash victims last year didn't have seat belts, they weren't on. And the way we know that is, is the two that burned, we could still see the remnants of the of the seatbelt, I forgot what they call it, but it's where it retracts into the holder. Both buckles were melted right into the holder. So if it was, if they had them on, they would be latched into the other part that's latched, that's kind of some of the things that we look at. You just look at it, you couldn't tell, but you look at that, so.
And noticing E T O H.
That's alcohol. Ethyl alcohol.
What's, what's M V, M V C?
Motor vehicle crash. Motor vehicle crash, motor vehicle accident. I say motor vehicle crash instead of motor vehicle accident, just because it's a crash. Most of them aren't accidents, it's because somebody's being stupid. Or they were under the influence of alcohol or drugs, and/or drugs. I call a motor vehicle crash. We had one homicide, as you're aware of, that one was a, that was a tragic case. Of course, that's been handled through the prosecuting attorney's office, and I think it's getting close to being resolved if it isn't already. That was a gunshot wound. Both of our homicides recently have been by firearm, last two years, three years. Suicide, we had one suicide last year, and that was also with a firearm gunshot wound. That gentleman was from out of the area. Most of our suicides are non-residents. That was another thing I put in my quarterly report that I, that I'll add, I'll talk a little bit in another minute, but most of the suicides for ninety-nine point nine percent are male, we had one female in the last eight years. Most of them are male, and there are almost always firearms involved. One was carbon monoxide poisoning, but he didn't have access to firearms because he was a convicted felon, but that gentleman several years ago. Most of them are, are almost all were firearm related. And in this case, this gentleman that died by suicide, he didn't have any alcohol or any other illicit drugs in his system. Most of the time, we do see some, some level of that, but this gentleman, it wasn't, it was more, it was, he had some medical through finding out later, several weeks later, going back through some medical records and talking to family and friends and coworkers from the Boise area where he worked and lived, we found out that he had some undiagnosed terminal cancer and left a note at work. And he left work and didn't come back a week later, so. Those are, those are kind of just interesting things that we, part of our investigation, part of what we look at. Natural deaths, number one, always heart disease. Heart attacks, heart failure, congestive heart failure, hypertensive cardiovascular diseases, hypertension, essential hypertension, lungs.
You're talking to three elected officials there, Scott. Be careful what you're saying.
Hypertension right there.
I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying, that's just the statistics, and nationally, you follow right along.
My family, let's not go there.
We try to calm her down.
Out of the twenty-nine natural deaths, twelve were due to heart disease, cardiovascular, some kind of cardiac disease. There was one lung cancer, can read through those, diabetes creeping up, we had four, diabetes type two and one. E T O H abuse, alcohol abuse, is related to six of those deaths, which is more than we've seen back abuse, dementia, and hepatic disease failure. This one, one female had liver disease and liver failure. Of course, the undetermined, we don't know what happened. It's just one of those things that after several weeks and weeks of lots, lots of lots of testing and even genetic testing, that was the last thing that they looked at, and it's expensive, expensive, expensive. Thank goodness, we got a grant with National Institutions of Health to do some genetic testing on undetermined cases. Most of them were for cold cases, but thank goodness, they said, well, there's a forensic part of that as well, and Ada County did ninety-nine percent of it. The rest of us coroners in the state that wanted to be involved in that study, we had to supply a few records, and that took probably about an hour, two hours to gather those records, send them down there, and then they were able to use that grant funding for that, because genetic testing is extremely sensitive and it's, it takes a long time, so, and it's expensive. So that was, that was the last part of that. That, hopefully that grant will be re, if it comes again, and we're not sure now with some changes in government funding and programs, hopefully that twenty twenty-six, it expires this year, twenty twenty-five. Hopefully next year it'll be re-appropriated, but we'll see. Law enforcement agencies, this is kind of something that I put in, who's helping, who's helping each other, and how do we work together? Really, there's the two agencies that, that I work with closely locally. On the local level is the Valley County Sheriff's, obvious, obviously the most, we use, we work with them the most. Most of our referrals for responding to cases, to deaths through the sheriff's office, McCall Police Department, there's a couple, and then Idaho State Police. Usually Idaho State Police are notified after a death, and usually they're traffic related. Most of the time, they're dealing with a death on the highway. Seventeen natural deaths through the sheriff's office, six accidents, two traffic, one suicide and one homicide, and then the two undetermined deaths. For a total of twenty-nine through Valley County Sheriff's Office, McCall Police Department, we had five. There were the two accidents and, I'm sorry, two natural deaths and three accidents, and then Idaho State Police, the two fatal car crashes on the highway. So we, as you know, I put the, now, I'm, I'm using the, the numbers from my way older reports that I had. The entire area, square miles of Valley County had changed, I've got some updated statistics, I don't, I hope these are correct. Our population is just by what the census provides to us, and then the projected. Of course, as you know, better than I even do, the population of Valley County is growing. Growing, growing, so. And then our activities.
Thought you've got about seven minutes left? So I'm just letting you know if you want to cover that first quarter.
Yep, that's it, my, the rest of the report on my, the coroner's activities, and then glossary terms, that's all just pretty self-explanatory there, I think. Lastly, well, first before, is there any questions?
No.
And then so far, okay. I decided just to go ahead and do a quarterly report instead of a monthly report, or just an annual report, so kind of maybe just give you you commissioners a, a kind of a snapshot of what's happening on a quarterly basis, so I plan on doing that. I, I've came up with a, kind of a format that I, that I use now, hopefully it'll give you kind of just a real brief idea of what's happened. So this is for the first quarter, October through December of twenty twenty-four, there were nine cases reported to the coroner's office. Seven of them were residents of Valley County, and two were not. I did nine investigations, so I did not release jurisdiction in any of those cases, just because I felt that they needed to be further involved, or I needed to sign the death certificate because a physician wouldn't, or just because of the circumstances. October, we had two, November, we had five, and December, we had three. So for the quarter, it was total of nine, and for the fiscal year annual total at the, at the end of January was nine deaths and investigations. Death notifications, I do death notifications, not only for the deaths that occur in Valley County. Sometimes we have Valley County residents, have family members, or next of kin, or next person that is available to contact out of county. We get calls a lot to make those death notifications, so. In, in, in October, I did two residents, gentlemen's homes, and then we did one in the hospital in November, and two in December made those death notifications there.
So you, well, I didn't realize that, so you have to go and notify the next of kin?
Next of kin. Corners, under statute, the coroner's responsible for notification of next of kin identification, can't be made positive identification of the deceased. Once that's made, then the next of kin is notifying, or sometimes it's a power of attorney, or a guardian, or a conservator.
Comes through your office.
Comes through our office. Sometimes that's a little tough because we don't know who the person is, haven't identified them yet. For instance, those two plane crash victims, we could positively identify them, positively, for seven weeks.
Oh, my goodness.
We had to go through DNA in the state lab, state, the state toxicology lab, or ISP lab did that for us, and we finally were able to identify them, and then we were able to cremate the both bodies in the parts that we had. So that was, and they were from California, or I'm sorry, from Arizona, so that was a little tough for that family, having to wait that long. We were ninety-nine percent sure, but there was no identifiable identification on the plane or the victims, so we had to, those things we have to do. So call-out days and hours, these are just, just kind of more for my information, I guess, just when I got called out and what day of the week. Did three autopsies in the, in the last quarter, we did two in November and one in December. We did one toxicology testing only in October and two in November. And then transports, we, I transported all nine bodies to the county morgue. Manner of death, October, natural deaths, there, I'm sorry, accident, there was one accident on October, there were five natural deaths in November and two in December. There's one pending from December that we're still waiting on. Involved systems, I just kind of put this, they were all males, there was no females that died in the, in the quarter. E T O H, drug toxicity, E T O H again is alcohol. Drug toxicity, some were cardiac related, there was one dementia case. Drug toxicity, some were cardiac related, there was one dementia case, um, sepsis, septic shock. A gentleman got the disease from a, from a cat wound and went septic shock and died from that. CVA, HTN, that's cardiovascular accident and hyp, or, and/or hypertension, stroke. Hypertension, cardiac related, uh, possibly, maybe cause a stroke, in this case it did, we knew that. The hypertension was uncontrolled, uh, even with medication and diet. And then butthleur, blunt force trauma injury, um, due to the accident. And then their age, their ages broke down there, vital statistics, education, just kind of gives us some of those things that I report to the state. Education wise, and then gender, there were nine males, zero females, and then race, all nine were white. And then marital status, that's another part of our reports that we send into this different state and federal agencies. And, um, there was one that was never married, two that were divorced, three that were married and three that were widowed. Older gentleman. And with that, that's pretty much all the record part. On the back or on the next page, the second page, um, of the quarterly report, I wouldn't, I, I went by quarter again and then I listed out cremation permits that are reviewed and signed by statute. The corner of the county that death occurs, doesn't mean that the body stays here or they're from here. The corner has to review those death certificates and make sure that everything is complete and satisfactory to, as far as cause of death as a match. Obviously, if, if it says pregnant and it's a male death, then we have an issue, that's happened a couple of times. We don't authorize the cremations until then. So we had 20, I had 20, uh, cremation permits that I reviewed and signed in, um, in the quarter. Death certificates signed and issued, I, I completed seven. And then FOIA, other requests for information. Generally, these are all records for autopsy or accident scenes. News, news outlets contact me constantly for, they want death certificates, they want autopsy reports. And I don't give them anything like that, I give them basically what the sheriff's office says, the name of the person that died, manner of death, if we know, where it occurred, obviously in Valley County, and the age and sex. That's it, probably give them, we don't give them contact information or cause of death, we never give a cause of death, only a manner of death, so. We had four requests for information there. And then expenditures.
Scott, let me ask one question there. So I'm looking at the numbers, so you had a total of nine deaths reported, but 20 cremation requests. So we had a lot of out of area.
So what that means is 11 deaths occur in Valley County that did not stay here in Valley County. The funeral home. We didn't handle those deaths.
Okay. Wow.
Most, all of those, out of all those 20, uh, all nine were cremated. So all nine of, so nine of those reviews were for my, for cases from Valley County. The other 11 were for other funeral homes, wherever they were. Couple were ship outs to, one was to Pennsylvania, but they cremated back there after they got there. So that number's always going to be different.
So they.
We had a lot of deaths on.
So they die here, but if they're out of the area, then the family takes them back wherever.
Wherever they're from, or sometimes they're just taken back home, for instance, to.
Sure, sure.
Wherever they're going to be buried. One was in New York, one was in Pennsylvania. Then the expenditures, what, what comes out of our budget for that quarter? Related, uh, related to the coroner's office and I listed those amounts out there. Ada County coroner's office are generally for autopsies, x-rays, examinations, those things, testing. And then NMS labs is purely toxicology tests. Prices went up, of course. It's hard to know at budget time because we do our budgets roughly July. They don't come out with their changes until September, October sometimes for the final tests. Last year, they only went 23 bucks, I think, for standard testing. There's a couple of other tests that went up 140 some dollars, but I generally don't do those. Carboxahemoglobin, those are fire deaths, carbon monoxide, those tests usually I don't. We can get those tested locally and much less expensive. So verbal reports, I just put a summary there, communication with other agencies involved at death scene. We work phenomenally with the sheriff's office, police department, McCall, we're working on some communication issues there. Haven't had any problems with either one, problems, just, just, um, just a few things that would help me as a medical legal death investigator, either myself or Jordan, uh, we're working on a couple of things there. Just like Representative Mopin, your, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mopin, your representative on the IAC, uh, Legislative Committee, I am as, for the Corners Association. So you know about the things that we've been going through with that. Big thing, corner legislation, that's the last thing on our list. With our midwinter legislative conference and our corner legislation, we just had a hearing yesterday, asked the committee for some changes in the coroner's legislation, finally got one part, now it goes to the House and Senate for their review and consideration and hopefully we'll get those changes. There's going to be a lot more coming, lots, lots more on the corner side. Some corners are absolutely for it, some are not, but change is hard.
Yes, it is, thank you Scott, for your updates, any questions?
Uh, very thorough, I appreciate that Scott.
You're welcome. I have bound copies, but I, I left them at the office, I just, when I got that call this morning, I just left without everything, so. But I will, I'll get those to you. See you next quarter.
I keep everything, anyway, so.
Okay.
Bound copies don't do me any good. All right, thank you very much, thank you for all your hard work.
You bet.
Thank Jordan for hers.
Jordan, um, she's had some physical issues, so I'm not sure if, what's going to happen with her. I'm going to have to discuss that with her a little bit further, but see what happens, but.
All right.
Take care Scott. I'm chair.
Yes, we will hold for five minutes, take a quick break.
And I'm up?
Yes, then you're up. Oh my gosh.
Chairman, we're back, huh?
Right, welcome back to our morning meeting. Our next, uh, presentation is from the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council, Lindsay Harris.
Good morning, commissioners, um, and Mr. Miller, um, and those online, and Commissioner Davis, welcome, um.
It's Caldwell.
Oh, sorry.
That's her, that's her name.
Michelle Caldwell, I'm sorry, I'm from childhood.
Yeah, we, we've been calling her that once in a while.
Oh my gosh, probably drives her nuts.
No, no, that's, that's okay, thanks Lindsay.
Yes, good to see you. So I, I thought, I've got my report, my update pursuant to the MOU that we're required to do. So I think, let's just start, let's just get the housing needs assessment, we'll present first and then I can chat about all the other things we've been up to, if that sounds like a fair enough plan. Um, all right, as you all know, my name's Lindsay Harris, um, I'm the executive director for the EDC, West Central Mountains Economic Development Council, and we have officially completed our regional housing needs assessment. So I'm embarking on the road show of presenting all this fabulous data to, so I presented to the Home Builders Association, um, the St. Luke's Community Board, and now you all, and then I'll be presenting to city councils and trying to spread the information far and wide, it is available on our website, the full assessment, it's an 86-page document, but it's actually a very easy, nice read, visually appealing, um, so it's not overwhelming, um, it's been nicely laid out. Um, and also I do want to preface that I have been used to being on the project management side of this project in the background, so, um, I have, we've had amazing consultants, so me being in the forefront is a, is a new role for me with this, so. Um, but anyway, I'm going to go, we can just keep scrolling, Doug, sorry. Um, I guess you could maybe go to a full page, is there like a full page, does it offer that? Um, that's okay, so, let's see, the, I think when I, I've presented on this before when we, we, you graciously contributed to the funding, but, um, the last housing data we have, at least for Valley County, was 2005. So that was why we felt like this was super important. Who is Economic Development Council? I know Commissioner Caldwell, um, you're not as familiar with us, but we are a regional 501(c)(3) nonprofit and we're guided by a board of directors and, um, we also have an early childhood program manager. And we focus on the core tenets of economic development such as housing, infrastructure, broadband, workforce development, um, small business assistance, um, early childhood. So we have our hands in many different things and are very well connected with federal and state resources as well. And all of this is made possible, thank you to Valley County, um, specifically, and then our, our rural economic development professional funding program through Department of Commerce. Um, so for this project specifically, um, if you scroll down to that Housing Action Team slide, this was who was comprised on this specific project was, so we're set up by community action teams, AKA committees. We feel like committee is a bit of a stale word. So, community action team, our CAT, and our housing CAT consists of Dylan Martin from Idaho Power, Michelle Groenewell from City of McCall, Cindy Herrick, uh, from, from the county, Belinda Provanture, Sherry Mopin, Vonitory, Kelly Hill and myself, and I feel like that was a very like diverse, robust group of folks. And then we went through the RFP process, uh, the Request for Proposal, we had five submissions and we ultimately went with Agnew Beck based on their expertise and just the personality that, that they had and we felt like we could work really well with them. So those were the three, three of their staff, um, that we specifically worked on with it. Um, others involved in the process, we held, um, last spring, we held our regional advisory group, which is comprised of leaders, local governments and housing nonprofits. And then we also had our sector groups, um, so that were based in construction, real estate property management, developers and small business. And the idea behind that was so we could have more like candid conversations and they would feel more comfortable openly sharing from their perspective with their relative sectors, um, like we could have a more open conversation about the, the challenges and the opportunities. And then our funders for this regional housing needs assessment, um, Laura Moore Cunningham Foundation, you all from Valley County, Perpetual Resources, Idaho Department of Commerce, we ended up having to go for a JEM grant, which thank you again to the Grant and Clerk's Department for helping us submit that grant that was awarded, so. We were able to fund the shortfall from the City of McCall Local Option Tax, um, grant that ended up not being funded, so we were luckily able to net that funding and also we were able to get an additional $15,000 to help with the implementation as we roll this out and hopefully prime us up for an action plan. City of Donley Local Option Tax, um, MCAR, and then the leftover funds from the West Central Mountains Community Foundation, I think was around $1,600. What, oh, go ahead, yeah.
Go back up a little bit, Doug, right there. That little, uh, communication you had there with those folks.
Yes.
What? What, if anything, came out of that discussion you guys had?
So the, in regards to the regional, the advisory group one, um, so what we did is we presented on initial data findings and then kind of it was a litmus test to see how that data landed with them. And that was what helped kind of spur the conversation and then, um, Ellen Campfield is, is one of the partners for Agnew Beck and she's very skilled in facilitation, so then they spurred, um, further conversation from that. And Sherry was in, I mean, if Sherry wants to speak to her experience, but.
Well, this was kind of level setting, where we're at and the information that was garnered. So the action plan is next. When you talk about, you know, what actions came from that, that's kind of the next step in this entire process.
This was in the data collection phase, the, the public input feedback phase. Um, so right around the same time, we also had a public survey where we got almost 700 responses as well from the public. But this was a targeted, these were targeted groups we wanted to speak with that have experience in, um, with the public, with development, with housing.
If I remember right, one of the things that came out of the home builders conversation was first of all an identification that yes, there is a need. But then also was how they can help fill that need, so.
Yes, exactly. Where there's, where the challenges are and where the opportunities are. And the regional, bringing the regional leaders together, you know, that very rarely happens. So just getting everybody in the room was, was helpful and beneficial. Um, and then we'll be building on that as we move forward. So what is a housing needs assessment? If you want to go to the next one, Doug, thank you. So it's, it's a tool, it's a tool used by communities, providers and developers to identify housing issues and solutions to offer like a strategic process to move, move the meter on local housing. And I guess more importantly, we felt like the regional approach was super important. We're appreciative of the City of McCall's efforts and their, their planning, um, but as we see, we, we recognize we're all intertwined. So the, this regional housing needs assessment, we felt was really critical. And also this market analysis piece that also not only was sales data, but rental data, um, which we really haven't had.
This did include Meadows.
Yes, and Meadows Valley, yep. Um, and I think in the proceeding, up, up above, we'll see, or later, we'll see the region that it covered. But the things that were considered were population projections and pent up, quantified pent up demand, housing and household characteristics of our communities, affordability and market conditions, labor market and regional employment trends, and then development, environment, land use, geographic constraints and policy. These are four key questions that we were asking ourselves and asking our partners through the process. Housing values, existing conditions and challenge, identification, planning for the future and making change. What are the actions that could come of this? And then the geography that was covered was Valley County and then Cascade, Donley, McCall, unincorporated areas, and then North Adams County, so New Meadows. And then the, the two census tracts in Meadows Valley that were unincorporated parts of Adams County. The process and timeline, this is just again overview, but these were the three major stages that got us to the point where we're at today with the final deliberal finding, final housing needs assessment. And then.
You say assessment. When I'm reading that final housing needs assessment, is that talking about the, we need more physical houses or need more apartments? What kind of needs are being weighed there?
All of that. Yeah, so they, I mean, it's really, it extracted a lot of different data, like it, it, it really gets, and we'll see, I'll show you the housing bridge later on in the presentation, but it, it goes as far as to say, in these median household incomes, we need X amount of rental units and we need X amount of, of units for purchase. But it, they really went to great lengths to analyze all the data out there to find the best educated estimate on where we need to be for multifamily, single family and rentals and an opportunity to purchase.
Right.
And the assessment gives us lay of the land, like where are we at right now? And then using projected population, where do we need to be in the next ten years? And then the next phase will, would be an action plan, which is how do we get there? So the assessment is the data part and then the, the action plan is the actionables.
That, that's Neil.
Yeah, I know.
I'm the action plan.
I know.
So you have to have this study for any, like, all of the low income properties that we've had in Valley County, they have to do a housing needs assessment.
Yeah.
So this information is actually being utilized by the developers
Yes.
in order to create the housing that meets that. And one of the reasons that Garnet Valley is not going through is this assessment shows where the rents need to be. And if they can't meet that rent, then that's telling the developer, I can't develop.
Yep.
So having this information creates opportunities, but also unfortunately and sometimes disincentivizes just because our needs are different than what the development.
Right, it does make it more intentional development and to fit more community need. And this has actually, we've had multiple developers ask, like specifically ask or want to be informed. And we were even sending preliminary information to developers that were in, in the kind of financial phase and, and figuring out their scope and scale of a project because they wanted to have this in, as part of that. So we, we've appreciated it's already being implemented.
Isn't it big, her, that you guys are seeing the price of the dirt?
Gone up, yeah. Oh yes, that, that, that is one of the, one of the barriers is the, is the price of dirt. Which is where the public-private partnerships can be so instrumental with land banking and other, other ways to make land more affordable, to cut the costs. I want to keep scrolling Doug, thank you. Great questions, keep asking them. So results and, and findings. So this is just a general overview of like housing pressures and elasticity. What are, what are the factors constantly at play to affect housing and, and how we got here? And so this is a book that Agnew Beck had recommended, but these are some of the, some of the forces at play that constantly are causing the, the fluctuation, the ebbs and flows of housing challenges. So key findings, and again, some of these are going to be like, well duh, but, but it is nice to have the data to show. So lack of affordability, our housing market is scarce for residents and local employees to be able to find affordable housing. And we've, obviously we're seeing wages are not keeping up with the costs of increasing housing. More than half of our renter households are cost burdened, meaning, meaning they're spending over one-third or nearly one-third of their monthly income on housing and thirty-eight percent of owner occupied households are cost burdened.
For that cost burden, I want to point out just for the general public too, but anytime someone's spending that much on housing, they have little to none to put back into the economy in other ways. So it impacts every other section of your economy when cost burden is so high for housing.
Everybody just pulls back, they have to.
They can't buy more groceries, they can't go out and do fun things with their families, they, you know, they can't go to the restaurants. So everybody is affected.
Yeah, there's sacrifices.
Yes.
And then we also identified not just the need for additional housing, but affordable rental housing. So this, this breaks, the next slide is housing tenure by household income. This is interesting. So this breaks down owner occupied units versus renter occupied units relative to their, their median income. So fifty percent of renters have household incomes under fifty thousand dollars, which is, that's, that's significant. Fifty thousand does not go a long way for a household these days. So half of renters are making less than fifty thousand for their house, household income. And then the other side of that is forty percent of homeowners have household incomes over a hundred thousand, which makes sense. If you have money, you can, you, you can afford to purchase a home. But, but this breaks it out by income level relative to if they're a renter or a, or a homeowner.
Yeah, it shows the breakpoint right there from fifty to seventy-five.
Yes, yeah.
They're comparable.
Yep, exactly, like that's the, that's the shift. Exactly. The average sold price and rent, I mean, obviously we know they've gone up, but data suggests that average monthly rent for a three bedroom unit has gone up a hundred and forty-four percent. And median home sale price in the last ten years has gone up two hundred and thirty percent. I was actually on the chairlift this weekend with a gentleman from Tucson, Arizona, who was saying prices have gone up a hundred, you know, a hundred percent. And I was like, oh, that's, that's nice. For, yeah, he was shocked, he couldn't believe it. So this shows our median home price, you know, at the time of the, and this is fluctuating all of the time, but seven hundred and ten thousand for our region is the median home sale price. And average rent is, for a three bedroom is twenty-two hundred.
That's just in nine years. That's, that's crazy.
Yeah, and obviously that's impacting our, specifically our workforce. Okay, the next one are, I think the next slide is the cost burdened households. More, as I mentioned earlier, more than half of all renter occupied and thirty-eight percent of owner occupied are cost burdened. So it's that kind of roughly one-third of their income is spent on either their mortgage or their rent. Key findings, the workforce, the, no, again, no surprises, the local workforce has been largely priced out of the housing market for, specifically for homeownership opportunities, which as we all know, owning a home means you have roots, means you have stability, means you're here, means you can plan for your future. And that's what we want here. So housing stock in the region is, is too expensive, especially those making their living, working here. And this is across all housing types, so single family, multifamily, townhomes. And then, as we saw, the final sale price is more than, is nearly tripled. This shows daily inflow and outflow analysis of, of our workforce. And I honestly, full, full disclosure, I need to get more specification on exactly what this graph is saying. But we do have a large part of our population that is leaving the area for, for their jobs. And then we also have nearly fifteen percent of our jobs are individuals living in the Treasure Valley. So we have, that's that commuter pattern that we're seeing on fifty-five. And I bet you a lot of those people would want to live here if they could. Yeah.
Is there a lot of that that are down in the valley or construction?
I mean, so that's a great question and actually I will ask Agnew Beck on like if we have a breakdown of what, but, I mean, I just know from driving the canyon in the morning, that's who is coming up here, but it'd be nice.
Those that are commuting in.
Yes, are.
There's a lot of our guys that are firefighters, those that actually, micron shifts, those that are shift workers.
Medical, healthcare too.
Yeah, they can go down for three or four days, you know, and then come back up for three or four days. Those that are on shift work are the ones that I've seen are leaving the area.
So then they're having to find a place to live from down there.
Okay.
Or if you're going to the hospital or to fire, they're providing the beds for you to stay in while you're there on shifts.
The next one is, is living wages for Valley County. And this is actually an interesting tool, it's, it's, it's on, you can see the, it's living wage, it's an MIT tool, but you can go to anywhere in the USA and look at what the living wage would be required. And this is using actually HUD, housing rentals, rental rates. So it's, those are, those are cheaper. I think it was nine, nine hundred for a, for a single person and like twelve hundred for a pair or a family or two bedroom unit and nine hundred for a, oh yeah, so eight hundred, excuse me, eight hundred for a single person. This is assuming rent is eight hundred dollars for a single person or nine hundred and sixty dollars for a couple. So in order to make rent and, and be at a healthy threshold, these are the wages that would be required. If they're a single person, if they're a, have a child. So this is, this is impactful to me.
And nine hundred is double that in Valley County, so now you can just double this graph to give us really.
Yep.
Yeah, sixteen dollars and five cents an hour.
If they're, if they're a couple living together with no children, they would each need to be making at least sixteen dollars an hour. And they, their rent would be nine hundred, assuming their rent is nine hundred and sixty dollars a month.
Good luck finding that.
Yeah.
So it's double that, so really, they both need to be making thirty-two.
So this, this shows kind of the razor thin margins that our workforce and our residents are working, residents are up against. Well, not just working, I guess those that maybe are retired and living off social security or what other, other means are, but, but yeah. So the next finding is the, the needed housing stock. To address current housing demand and to keep up with future population growth, we need to add one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one new housing units. So that's utilizing the conversion of existing units, but this is saying nearly twelve hundred new units would need to be built.
And this was when Garnet was going and so you really need to add those three hundred and twenty units to that. So we really need fifteen hundred.
Yes, I should, I should clarify that this was based on development that also was in the pipeline, which now with Garnet Valley being removed, that does, yes, change things. Sorry, I skipped ahead, but this shows population trends. We're, our region is seeing above state average growth. And so they took a more conservative estimate because the state is actually slowing with growth. We're still, I mean, it's still growing each year, but it has slowed down. So we're, we're going to assume that we also are slowing down. But this was the, they chose the conservative growth rate estimate.
Now those eleven hundred units, is that affordable units or is that just units period?
It would be, so it'd be, I'll, I'll show you the housing bridge, but it would be addressing all, all income levels. Good question. Again, this is, this is, yeah, this is like a conservative, middle of the road. You know, and then pie in the sky, potential regional population forecast, forecast in the next ten years. So needed housing stock, so with those twelve hundred units. And these units can enter the market through new construction, I guess it does mention conversion of existing vacant or seasonal units and through the conversion of large single family homes into multifamily or condo style units. So to answer your question Neil, yes, approximately two-thirds of these forecasted units need to, need to address individuals making a hundred percent or less of the median income. So two-thirds, and then one-third addressing those more higher income levels. There, there was encouraging news that we have seen in the last five years. A significant increase in multifamily being proposed or developed, which is a solid option. And then fourteen percent of, of the region's housing stock is over fifty years old. So that's something also to consider in our communities. And there are some fun, there is some funding available, but you know, again with federal funding, it's income qualified and you know, there are some USDA rehabilitation funds available, but, but it doesn't, it doesn't, won't apply to everybody. Or second homes that are dilapidated and need to be, you know, so. Anyway, the rehabilitation part I think is important. We would hate to see that housing stock go away.
Yeah, it's, back when you could buy those older homes, fix them up.
Yeah.
Make them very usable.
Yep.
And turn them and make a little bit of a profit on them and, you know, then they become affordable. Today, to buy that old home.
Yeah, that doesn't, doesn't pencil like it did.
Doesn't pencil.
No, not with the cost of things. Okay, the next is the, this kind of, the next slide offers a breakdown of the different types of units. So eleven hundred new units to address population growth. And then they've parsed it out like due to overcrowding. We actually luckily here in the region overall, we, we do not see overcrowded conditions like you would see in other areas, which is fortunate, it still exists. So this is saying two, ten units would be needed to address overcrowding. So, and then the, the, the units needed for express, this reflects on adjustment of additional housing demand expressed by the survey specifically. So seventy-two units, they have calculated that would needed to be added to address what the survey results, what the public said they wanted for housing. And then two hundred and seven units needing rehab or replacement. And then the grand total is that, almost fourteen hundred, total housing units.
So when you do the seventy-two, that, the public, what kind of units are you talking?
I know, that's a good question and I, 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 like what was specific in the survey that, that caused them to add that in? I will make a note.
The last survey that we did, the constituents were asked, are you in housing right now that you feel like you would be able to stay in for the next five years?
For planning for the future.
And so I suspect that these are individuals that have said, I'm in a, you know, twelve hundred square foot house.
I need.
Having another baby, you know, my kids are getting older, I'm going to need at least a sixteen hundred square foot house living. So something that is of a specific need was addressed in that survey.
Yeah, that functionally current, their current housing situation didn't provide. But that's a great question and something that we could add to just improve what, what we're saying. And I, the, I'm, the, the needs assessment itself has much more information, but good question Neil, thank you. I don't know the answer.
That's okay. I like asking questions.
No, I think it's great, this is great feedback for us.
Catlin, if you have any questions, make sure and speak up as we go.
Okay, now we're gonna see all the colors of the rainbow here on the next slide. That's the housing bridge. Which specifies the median income levels and then how many rental units and how many renter units for purchase would be needed to address population growth. And so we see, you know, the, with the lower income levels, the thirty percent AMI, you know, number of units needed, owner units needed thirteen, you know, versus two hundred and thirty-eight rental units. And so at, you know, you see that shift as it goes across the higher income levels to where we need more units for purchase versus units for rentals on those, as the income levels shift over. But once you get to that eighty, you know, and I know Sherry has said this multiple times, but that eighty to one twenty is, you know, is our middle, middle incomes where there isn't, isn't federal funding available to subsidize housing. So that's, and again, that was that, also what you pointed on that graph Neil, where you see that, that nexus of, of those median income levels.
Is that where Garnet couldn't fit in, was that a piece there?
Because of the number of affordable units we were putting on them, the affordability of those units were such a low value to the rest of them, they couldn't get enough in rents on the rest of the units to be able to offset the low income. And the cost of infrastructure is, is extremely high, that's a conversation we need to have because we have another developer that may not be able to develop either for the same reason, the cost of infrastructure is too high.
And of course, the, the ultimate outcome is that healthy thriving communities require various types of housing availability across all of these median income levels. We need, we need all of them to be able to have a, a diverse thriving region. Um, the next slide is breaking up unit type. Um, this, so this took an assessment of existing um, housing units in the region and actually broke it even down by community and what their composition is of their housing units. So I thought, I think this is interesting. Um, so you can see which, which communities have a little less single family and maybe have different other types of housing units that they offer. Um, and I think it lends itself to each community is unique and different and gets to decide where they want to go and who they want to be and, and what community types, what community housing they want to see. So um, and then also that we've seen in the last, uh, recent years, two hundred and seventeen multifamily units constructed in the, in the last four years. Um, and then again, we qualify that twelve hundred units were proposed in the development pipeline at the time of the assessment. Obviously, that's constantly fluctuating. So in the region, yeah, seventy-seven percent are single-family homes.
I think it's interesting how few of the manufactured housing we have up here because that is the affordability option that we're all looking for.
Yeah, and techno, as technology improves.
Yeah, they're no longer really mobile homes. I ask them not to use that term. It's, they're manufactured. It's just where they're manufactured. Is it onsite or is it in an enclosed space?
Um, the next slide addresses housing occupancy. Um, and I, you know, this, this was brought up a lot in our conversations because I know, so Agnew Bex, they use census data. They feel, they feel like that is the best data that's available. And then they did cross-reference it with MLS, with like the market real estate um, information they were able to pull. And then also, you know, working with the assessor's office as well. So this, this was what they felt like was the best percentage to identify housing units that fall under the definition of vacant, so.
A vacant is the yellow.
Yep. So they're, according to what we've, what we've assessed, sixty-seven, seven percent of the units in the region.
So short-term rentals.
Yeah, or, or just second, third homes that aren't used.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so um, and actually it shows even the vacancy details. So ninety-six percent of the vacant units are vacant, seasonal, recreational used. And um, for sale or rent is only one percent. Um, the, the final key finding is, and I phrased it, but it takes a village. Um, new housing alone isn't, isn't the way to solve this problem. Um, local coordination and collaboration with one another is necessary. Um, you know, updating housing policy, land use ordinances, um, to assure, ensure long-term attainability for individuals who live and work here. Um, so some outcomes of this, you know, could be the formation of a regional housing coalition. Um, and that's why getting everybody together in the room is so critical. And then a regional housing action plan would be the next logical step in all of this. And then the continued public and private partnerships, working together to create more units and create more opportunities and refine current systems um, to encourage local housing creation. Um, so the survey, uh, like I said, there were six hundred and ninety responses, which we were so happy about. Um, and these were just some interesting little nuggets that kind of got teased out of this housing survey results. Um, ten percent of, only ten percent of respondents lived, lived with a roommate, which was interesting. And um, we actually had a really nice uh, response rate of all sorts of income levels and also where they lived. Um, and if they were renters or they were homeowners, like it was a diverse mix of responses. And then, I mean, you know, thirty-five percent of respondents indicated a high level of stress related to housing within the last three months. Twenty-five percent of respondents were interested in buying a home and forty-five percent of respondents were interested in renting a home. And they, not only that, they were open to renting other options other than single-family homes. Um, I do think that the single-family home dream people are being more realistic about and they're weighing the cost benefit of, they want to live here, they love it here. They would rather have, you know, whatever they could, whatever fits their functional needs for their family and be able to live and work here than have this, you know, single-family home dream. Um, obviously, everyone deserves the right um, to pursue their dreams, but um, I do think there's, people are more realistic about, about what they want. Um, and then the, the graph shows how many bedrooms would your rental unit need? And I was surprised, over half responded to rooms, um, which I don't know why. I guess, you know, in, in New Meadows, they've been building two-bedroom units and at the time you were kind of like, two bedrooms, but it, obviously, it serves, it serves the sector of the population and what they need.
Well, and they're younger families. You know, you've got small children that don't need their own bedrooms.
Right.
And they're willing to provide, you know, just that separate bedroom.
Yep, yep, or a young couple or um, a single person who's a professional and doesn't, that wants a, a place for an office or a guest, but doesn't want to live with somebody else. So I appreciated the survey. Um, the next slide showcases the community profiles. So in the needs assessment, you'll be able to view all of these, but it goes into more detail specific to the four communities, um, what their housing profiles look like, um, which I think is a really neat characteristic of the needs assessment. Um, the next slide, regional housing challenges. These were just obviously high-level identifications of challenges, cost of construction, development, development and permitting process. Um, you know, feedback on, not necessarily specific to any jurisdiction, but just, you know, the timelines for some folks, especially with the cost of construction changing so rapidly, especially in the last couple of years. Um, six months could make or break a project. So um, infrastructure availability and needed upgrades, obviously, yeah, infrastructure. And that, as we've seen, it dictates where people are building, um, which then comes with its own subset of challenges, availability of land, regional collaboration and disjointed decision-making, community attitudes and opinions. Um, so that's why sharing this information and informing people and educating people can help dispel perceptions and offer hard facts and, and information to kind of like Sheri mentioned, level set. Um, what happens next? The regional housing action planning process. So this is what a, an action planning process would look like using the housing needs assessment data. It is, it, it would be, it would be a large undertaking, but I think there is value in it that even transcends housing because it addresses all sorts of challenges like infrastructure, transportation, workforce development. Um, so it's kind of a holistic opportunity for housing, not just housing, but everything else. Um, what can communities do? Um, conduct a regional housing action plan, code revisions, parking exemptions, density and height bonuses, ADU allowances, more flexible design, reduced or waived connection impact and permitting fees, reimbursement incentives, expedited permitting, public site improvements and right-of-way, deed restrictions, public donation, long-term land leases, development of publicly owned land with deed restrictions, um, fund and utilize land trusts. I do want to, I, I don't know who it would be, but it would be nice to have a housing expert specific to Idaho. Um, Idaho is unique with its code. So what can we do in the state of Idaho? And I don't, I would love to have a more in-depth report on that. So if anyone knows anyone, um, I think that could be helpful to the conversation. Uh, what can, so the, a regional approach, what can it do? This is an example in Truckee. Um, and the outcome of that regional approach for their um, action plan was housing for the area's workforce. It galvanized a partnership between twenty diverse partners, specifically eleven funders. Um, it was, it took three years. It began with their needs assessment and it catalyzed millions of dollars of investment and hundreds of new housing units in the Tahoe-Truckee area, but also overall elevated community awareness and local government capacity.
Who, uh, I mean, it sounds great, but who funded?
The Truckee assessment specifically? Um, I don't, I don't know, but um, I could find out.
That's kind of a big deal when they're pumping that kind of money into, you know, that, putting that much housing.
Oh, well, so I think, I think specifically the units were funded by like eleven private funders, but specifically who funded the regional action plan, I don't know. Um, but they're saying the outcome of this action plan was it brought together twenty-nine partners and eleven of those partners to create housing units were private funders.
You're talking private money was used?
Oh, eleven funders, I guess it says. So it could be several different partners. I don't know specifically if they were private, public. I'm assuming it was a mix, probably.
There's head, there's, you know.
Yeah, so.
Tech money, a lot of federal money that goes into these low-rent projects. You have to, you can't build them on private money.
Yeah, um, like in, in Teton County in uh, Driggs, there was a project that Northwest Capital Partners out of Boise helped put together that package. And there were like fourteen different funding mechanisms to create that one project.
There's angel funds.
Yes.
Which are angel investors. They, they have money they want to put into housing.
Yeah, that they want to, they want to invest it ethically, um, and for a cause. Um, but it does, it's, it's a patchwork quilt of, of different funders to make these projects happen. And it does require expertise, um, such as Northwest Capital Partners or Neighbor Works Boise, people that are well-versed in it, that can bring everybody together.
This is the vision of the housing trust for this. Does housing trusts historically do this work?
Yes. Um, I think that is, let's see, we're almost to the end. Final thoughts, observations, questions? Where do you think we go from here? Thanks for your time today and thank you for helping fund the assessment. We've already seen it being utilized and hope to spread this far and wide so it gets in the right hands, it's publicly available. Um, and we'll, we'll be updating it annually, um, as the data changes with the units proposed, units developed, that sort of thing.
So this also is part of the hazard resiliency conversation that BSU was doing. And they are taking this plan and working, they met with Sinda last week, but there's a regional team that is looking at this to say, okay, in Idaho, these are the things that we can do. What is Valley County doing specifically? You know, what does our codes and ordinances look like? You know, what are the things that we can actually work on internally to make it um, less of a burden to build here?
Yep.
So they will use this information. But the next step is that implementation plan. How do we take this back to the community and make this a valuable tool as we move forward?
We don't need a tool, we need units.
We need the, or the tools to make the units. Um, but I, I wasn't, I've been encouraged, I guess I should say. I, um, the home builders, uh, there were probably thirty-five people, thirty folks that were there for that presentation and it was really nice to have them. They were, they were really engaged. Um, and I left that meeting feeling uplifted, so um, just keep spreading the gospel and um, informing people on, on the challenges and hopefully, you know, that opens doors for opportunity.
May I actually question you? Um, those units that were built just south of the Kitty Jail, um, those low-income of any type?
Oh, the springs, the spring apartments?
It's called the springs?
Yep, um, those are subsidized. Yep, income qualified. They do have a certain set of units set aside for market rate, but it's like, it's, it's a select few. Otherwise, it is, it is income qualified.
So how did they, have you looked into how they, they put that whole project together and made it work? Have you looked into that?
County donated the land, so they didn't have any land costs. They received Lytech money, so that's a tax credit project.
And it's on city services.
On city services. So honestly, if they had it to do again, they should have gone up another story and created that many more units.
Yeah.
No, I was just curious. Or Hillary.
Yes.
So I have a question. Um, I, I appreciate the housing needs assessment and all of the information. And the, and I see the opportunities for partnerships in the future. However, I think Valley County is in a very interesting situation and I'm just wondering how you guys have, or what you've talked about, about trying to tackle this, where these units that a lot of the workforce housing and the units that we need, need to be near cities, both for um.
Yep, services, yeah.
To get into the services and stuff. How do you guys, have, have you been talking to the cities? I mean, McCall has no services available septic-wise, Cascade City does not either. Donley is surrounded predominantly by agriculture ground. How do you oversee in the future any of these plans taking on those facts that are really inhibiting growth of these type of units around the cities?
Great question. Um, that would be, that would be a part of that action planning process is diving more deeply into land use, planning, um, infrastructure. And the needs assessment, um, didn't go into detail on that, um, because we needed different types of data and also because of the region's sensitivity to that. Um, and so the, the goal of the action planning process would be to identify all those barriers and then have a, you know, a comprehensive plan on where, where, what should go where and why. So that is a great question and that's a great point.
And one of the things that really needs to be identified is some of the things are already approved. Um, the cost to hook up to the sewer and the water is so exorbitantly high that they don't know if they're even going to be able to build. So it is, right now, it's, we need a large conversation on what is our infrastructure? You know, what, what can we do? Can we help them through some grants? You know, how, how can we help these entities identify infrastructure? Because the problem for the county is there's no infrastructure or high-density development. And so therefore, it's going to push it all to the county, which is what the residents don't want.
Right.
But in reality, that's what's going to happen. So we either have to figure out how to help the.
Yep.
You know, the districts find some grant funding, find a way to help develop this infrastructure without putting it all on the back of the developer, or else we're going to have county subdivisions.
Um, and I guess that would be the goal, Catlin, of also like the regional housing coalition, um, as well.
I guess I would just like to see the cities be on board with this. I think we can offer to help them as much as we can, but if they're unwilling, then I don't, I don't know where to go forward.
Right, like what to do with it all.
Madam Chairman, could you, Ms. Harris, may I ask a question?
Oh, absolutely.
Is it the intent of the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council to lead the charge of the action plan? Or is there an expectation that the Commissioners of Valley County lead the charge?
Oh, I don't think we, we, we have not, it would, it would be our organization. Um, just because we do represent the whole region and because we are positioned as a neutral entity, um, with, you know, with opportunities to seek grant funding and whatnot, um, to be able to, to fund it. So, um, no, we don't, we don't expect our leadership to take that on. It would be something that our organization would do in collaboration with others, but we're prepared to spearhead that process. Um, we feel it's important, so.
There will be some funding requests, I'm sure, of all entities.
Yeah.
You know, that will be something that we will do. That's where the collaborative approach will come, is we can get all the cities to participate, the county to participate, and our other outside funders.
Uh, infrastructure is, is, is the elephant in the room for sure, um, with all of this, I think, me personally, um, my observations. Thank you for the question and the thoughts. Um, any other questions in regards to the housing needs assessment? And then I just have a few minutes where I can chat about my update. Any, any other thoughts? Okay, um, so I provided, I think it should be in your packet, but I gave a little memorandum update of what we've been up to pursuant to the MOU that we signed this past fall, that just gives some high-level specific to what the funding, um, was going to go towards. So I identified, identified what we've been doing. Um, and actually, I, I mentioned about a US Small Business Administration meeting that occurred last week. We brought all regional chambers together and we're aiming to have a workforce development panel and have federal and state partners come up to our region and do a little roadshow, um, that one would be held in McCall and one would be held in Cascade. And the dates we're looking at are April fourteenth and fifteenth. So they would come up for actually two full days. It'd be like, you know, a couple-hour workshop. And then the rest of the day would be for small businesses to be able to sign up and have one-on-one meetings with these partners coming up. So that is an update to what we've been discussing. I think that would be a really great thing for the region. Our economic summit is so broad that sometimes though the small business workforce development nuggets get lost in the day. And so we feel like it deserves a dedicated day, so we're thinking spring is a great time. And so we feel like it deserves a dedicated day, so we're thinking spring is a great time to do that. Any other-
Still working on broadband?
Yes.
Broadband update? You know more than I do.
I think you know more than I do. But the county did approve that contract, so to do the planning grant that was a U.S. state grant through Imagine Idaho. That's a broadband planning grant to assess infrastructure and infrastructure needs for broadband. Sorry, I've got several attachments here. I also attached my rural economic development reporting.
We didn't get your report. We didn't get any of that. Can you make sure that-
I am sending it right now, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Don't worry. Might just recap if you have something to recap.
So specific, so the economic summit, several of you were there. Thank you so much for taking the time. That was great. Thank you for your sponsorship of that. The Creative District is moving along. They're going to be doing their artisans tour this summer again. And the funding for that specifically goes to the marketing and administrative costs of the Creative District and supporting local artist businesses, providing the seed money for the artisan tour, which is to promote, I don't know, it was like twenty-seven or something, local businesses, artist businesses that participated in that studio tour last summer. And then the construction and placement of the mini galleries that will feature local artists' work in all four communities. And then event coordination and support for business development opportunities. I actually met with somebody that specifically, a couple weeks ago, that specifically does point-of-sale and e-commerce. And she is an artist, and so we're looking at maybe, I would love to partner with the Creative District to have her speak on e-commerce specifically and how to set up an online shop. And then the natural resource management planning. We met in January with the Hazard Climate Resilience Institute, who's doing their resilience assessment and piggybacking for our natural resource management planning efforts to complement each other and not duplicate efforts. So we're letting Boise State move forward with their resiliency assessment, and then we will backfill with the resource management planning effort. But continuing to have conversation with Boise State so that we can work in parallel with each other. And then specific to my work, let's see, I don't know, I've been up to a lot. I have noticed an uptick in small businesses reaching out, which I think is awesome. That's my favorite thing to do. And so I love supporting small businesses and offering resources. Let's see, the workforce housing project in Cascade through the Housing Trust, that is breaking ground or being constructed any day.
Already have the floor and the walls that are already being built. It's exciting. We're moving forward. We'll have that by hopefully first of June.
And then the City of Cascade geothermal project that has been taking up my time as well. I'm doing the workforce development side of things, so we've been meeting with local contractors that would be required for heat pump installation of those units to tie into the geothermal system. The City of Cascade will be hosting a public open house for the community in April. More details to come, but that would be for the public to learn more about the project. Let's see, the Boise State resilience assessment also is moving forward. And we're refining the survey questions that will be for the advisory group meetings that Boise State's going to be convening with regional stakeholders. And so those questions are being vetted by our board, for example, to offer feedback.
We will all be invited to those meetings?
Yes, yep.
And there's going to be a lot of conversation between now and into summer to get all of the input. So please, you know, choose which ones you can attend and please attend those. That's going to be, that's going to be a huge lift for our All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, our CWPP.
Emergency management.
Yeah, emergency management, all of that.
And then also, I've been having these in the last couple of weeks with St. Luke's and Heartland High School to bring like a doc for the day type of programming so that regional, and then we are opening it up to regional high school students so they could come and sign up on a day they don't have school and learn about the healthcare industry and professions and professional opportunities across the board. And partnering with Cascade Medical Center and St. Luke's. And the EDC will be sponsoring that, thank you to some of that workforce funding, so that we can provide some food for the day. So anyway, some of the efforts. Any questions?
One comment I want to make tying all of that together. So our kids leaving high school today have no place to live, and so they're leaving the area. What this workforce development training does is it shows them what they can do in this region if they're able to stay here. Somehow, we have to marry those two things together. We have to get some housing so kids can move out of their parents' home into their own and begin their careers here in Valley County and don't have to leave.
Yes.
So it's just a super, super critical thing that gets overshadowed by other conversations.
Yeah, our youth for sure are an important part of that piece. Anything else? You know, we're only two minutes over.
Okay.
We did it.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Catlin, you didn't have any questions, did you?
No.
Thank you.
I didn't.
Okay. All right, next on our presentation schedule this morning is Ignite Idaho. Tracy, welcome. We have a guest with you.
All right. Well, we just wanted to, my name's Tracy Jameson. I'm the Executive Director at Ignite Idaho Family Resource Center.
I'm Shiloh Riker. I'm the administrator. I was here, I think, in October speaking with you guys.
We just wanted to follow up and let you guys know the updates on our crisis response program. You guys gave us seed money, and we just want to fill you in on everything that's happening. We have a video that we would like to show, just kind of of all of our programs, and then we can kind of go through our PowerPoint.
How badly we need broadband.
Right.
From an early age, Tracy Jameson was driven by a deep desire to support those in need, whether by lending a hand during a crisis or easing the weight of everyday responsibilities. Her passion for making a difference became the foundation for her life's work.
All families, all kids, all adults have needs, need support, and I want to be able to give them that.
That passion of hers led to the founding of Ignite Idaho, now proudly located across from Albertson's in the large brick building, 106 East Park Street in the heart of beautiful McCall, Idaho.
Our mission statement at Ignite Idaho is to strengthen families and help prevent child abuse.
When I was fifteen years old, I had pretty much lived, I went to private schools. My life was pretty normal. I started kind of being a little bit of a rebel. And I met up with some kids, and one in particular, his name was Michael. And I realized that not everybody lived like I did. He was in a very abusive family. They used drugs and alcohol. And he needed help, and I didn't know how to help him. And I was able to meet up with him, you know, four or five times. And one of the times, I said, you know, I wished I knew how to help you, and I just don't. And I said, but I promise you that one day I will work with children and their families, and I will help them be strong. And I can't even say it without crying. And so Ashley and I said, let's just do it.
Welcome to Ignite Idaho. Let's take you inside and see what we have to offer. So here is our resource center and our drop-in wellness program, childcare and preschool. Just a quick peek. Here's our preschool room.
One of the reasons we started the childcare and the preschool and the drop-in wellness because these families need resources and they need to drop their kids off so they can get their own needs met. Families are able to come in, whether they need treatment for recovery, they need just counseling, they just want to go to the grocery store, or they want to go on a hike, you know, whatever that is. We want to be a part of everybody's wellness program.
I do case management, which is helping people find housing and helping them get insurance, helping them find new providers, just kind of coordinating them with other resources. You can generally tell from the tone of voice if they're in crisis. I often ask, are you in the middle of a crisis right now? Next steps are reach out to Tracy, kind of give her what's going on in the situation, and get an idea of who would best be the one to help that person. I just feel myself that I like to give back because I had help with a situation when I was a kid that was very similar to the work we do here, and it just warms my heart to give back.
Another great resource that we have is the Anchor, which is directed just for the teens and youth of this community, which I feel like is significantly important in a mountain community.
So this is our Anchor, our Youth Assessment Center. We have kids come in after school, we do assessments, we allow them to come and play, they can get tutoring. This is also a space where if the police needed to bring a family or the youth, they could come in here, hang out with them, and decide what their needs are.
Well, I think it's bigger than most people understand, especially in Valley County, where we don't have a lot of resources like bigger-
There's our sheriff.
And traditionally, the police or the sheriff got called for troubled kids or somebody on alcohol or drugs. And I'm not sure that's really the correct answer. I don't think law enforcement's the answer. But it is a solid conduit when we have something like Ignite to help us out. We can make sure that they understand that we can get them help, we can get them help safely, because jail's not the place to get better.
I would like for it to grow, continue to grow, us to continue to be able to provide more resources, have more counselors, case managers, so that we can reach more people in this community.
Ignite Idaho has been here long enough to prove themselves. As humans, we're constantly looking for retirement, right? And we're looking for investing to where we have a secure future. There's no difference here. If we, as a community, invest in Ignite, we're investing in our community, and we're going to make ourselves a more prosperous and brighter community in the future by having this resource. But we do have to make sure that they stay around. It costs a lot of money to keep counselors, it costs a lot of money to keep this building. It costs a lot of money to make sure we have people who actually care and love our community. And we have that, and the hardest part is securing that, and now it's up to us to make sure that we get to keep it.
For more information, visit igniteidahofrc.org.
Very good.
CBS's Sixty Minutes has been blasted today after it was revealed that they are up to their old fake news tricks again in a bid to undermine Donald Trump and his administration. The latest stunt was airing a sympathy segment which featured an employee who was supposedly a victim of Elon Musk's savage USAID cuts. But it turns-
Poor Doug.
We just want to make sure you're awake.
So Tracy, what was that big deal you just got the other day that you graduated from? I kept seeing it on here. Congratulations, Tracy, for-
Oh, thanks, Shelley. I finally got the courage up to take my clinical test. I was just gonna slide by, but I just went in. I'm not a liar, but I did tell everybody I was going for a hearing test. And I went down there and took it and passed, which I was like, so excited.
Congratulations.
So, yeah. So I'll just tell you a little bit about Ignite. So we were founded in 2021. Ashley and I decided that, you know, we have done this for a long time, and we needed to have a space specifically for people to be able to walk in, call us, and get their needs met. And so we did that in 2021. Now we have grown significantly and we're able to offer crisis response. And you guys, we came to you last year, you gave us some seed money. And if you remember where Betsy was, there was a large desk, and she was talking about helping people with housing and medication and all these different things. That's the space we were able to get with the funding that you guys gave us. And we've had since then over a hundred and fifteen crises, people coming into that space, whether it's they're using meth or they need help with housing or food with their children or behaviors, whatever that is. And we've been able to separate them from our other space where our childcare resources are, the Anchor, our Youth Assessment Center. So being able to have that added space has been so beneficial. We're realizing that a lot of people don't even have Medicaid right now. So these people are coming, we don't want to have to say, sorry, we can't help you because you don't have insurance. So, you know, continuing to get these funds outside of those other resources is vital because these people are coming in, we're able to help them. And then we also give them these other services like skill-building, counseling, parenting classes, free childcare, so they can go get their other needs met. So I feel like as we go through the slides, it'll show kind of what we've built. The next slide shows we started in the middle, basically just as a one-stop shop. We had, call us, we'll help get your needs met. And as the years have progressed, the gray spots are showing all the services that we put into place.
Or that we're able to give to people with.
So. Community supports, yeah.
We call it wraparound services, and I think this is a really great visual for all the ways we can wrap our community members into our services.
And so here, if we start talking about the crisis response program that we came to you guys last year, we are meeting people where they're at, whether it's in their home, at St. Luke's, wherever that crisis is, we're going to them, so we're mobile. In Boise, Benchmark is the only other service that will come to Valley County, and it's two and a half to three hours at their fastest points, okay? So sometimes it could be six or eight hours. They're the only other service that will help with crisis response in Valley County. Like I mentioned earlier, a hundred and fifteen crises. Those were people, very few of those people had to leave our community. So, you know, I was averaging about three people a month that needed a higher level of care. But we were able to at Ignite, assess them and say, what do you guys need? So we were decreasing law enforcement, we were decreasing St. Luke's and health and welfare calls by being able to get them, talk to them, help them feel safe enough to say, what are your needs? Well, we're living in a tent in the middle of winter. Okay, let's fix that problem. Some of these things we can't do here. So some of them we had to send to the crisis response, you know, in Boise or the crisis centers. You know, some had to go to Cottonwood or, you know, some other higher level of care. But they were able to come right back to us, and we were able to get them into our services or with our partners. We have so many partners right now in the community that are able to also decrease some of these things so we can keep the families in the community. I'll have Shiloh talk a little bit about some of our data.
So on this slide, you can see a bar graph. So this is the reason we got a call. Obviously, the number one reason we've had a call from May to January is mental health and substance use. Often, we would not single out substance use as-
Often, we would not single out substance use as one thing. Almost every time we respond to someone having a substance use crisis, it's also correlated to mental health. We've also gotten a few calls for homelessness, domestic violence, and child safety concerns, but these are just the reasons they called. And often, when we bring people in and we listen to their story, we find out that there is so much more going on. Often, transportation issues, food insecurity, losing their utilities, struggles with heating, and all of those things compound into what presents as a mental health crisis and/or a substance use crisis. But it turns out there's so many things going on in the lives of the people we're serving.
If you look at the next slide, it shows Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And most often, people are showing different signs, but in all reality, they're not getting their basic needs met. If you flip there, it'll show kind of their physiological needs, their safety, love and belonging. So as you look at this, you can see where if they don't have food, clothing, shelter, we're going to start seeing a lot of escalation in other areas of our life. And that's when we step in and we're able to say, okay, what do you need? Do you need a mental health provider? Do you need food? Do you need clothes? Do you need childcare for your child so you can go get your own needs met, whatever that is?
Yes, so Maslow's hierarchy, just touching back on that for just a second, teaches that if you aren't at the bottom level of your pyramid's stable, you can't get stable as you go up that pyramid. You cannot understand yourself and be your best self if you're hungry or if you don't feel safe. So a big part of our crisis response, and I think what makes it so unique and how it feeds into our Family Resource Center model, is that we get these people in a crisis and it's not, okay, let's get you stable enough for the hour, go on and have a nice day. It's, man, I know this is 9:00 PM on a Saturday and you are not doing good, and we just got you a safety plan made and we're going to connect you with a counselor, but come back into our office, we would love to help you with your job application, we would love to help you find housing away from your user, we would love to do all of those things. And so I think that's what makes our crisis response so impactful. And then Doug, if you could go to the next slide, please, thank you. So this is a pie chart conveying all the different places we sent people in January. Because we're a mental health organization with multiple counselors, we have a decent chunk of those resources that are mental health. And that number includes anyone who is going to case management, anyone who's receiving peer support, or who was sent to a support group or skills building as well. So all of those things, we continue to see housing. Housing is always about a steady 10% of what we're working on, and I am sure you are all very well aware of the challenges with that. And then every winter, we just see this increase in concern about utilities and heat and food as well, people struggling to get pellets for their wood stove, people struggling to pay their power bill if they're in an electricity-only home, and all of those things. So the beautiful thing about our program, however, is we are willing to connect anyone who comes in for help with the help they need to the best of our abilities. It takes courage to come in, right? To put down your pride and say, I need help. That is difficult, especially in a rural community where we are all dependent, hardened, and ready to care for ourselves. But with that, the caveat is, you need to participate in our programs. Man, you're here and you don't have health insurance and you're in a crisis, we're going to help you this time. Come back in, come see us, and we're going to figure out how we can get you on some insurance. What can we do? Oh, man, you are really having a hard time with learning how to parent, and we have de-escalated this crisis, but we need you to come to parenting class. And so a huge part of working with these people is building up the skills to teach them how to do these things themselves. We want people to look at Ignite and say, wow, you guys helped so much, and now I know how to care for myself, now I am independent, now I am sustainable. And I think my favorite story is, I was at the vet for an emergency vet visit. It was worst-case scenario, our 12-week-old puppy broke his leg, it was a bad day. And I had someone at the vet office say to me, you were at Ignite Idaho, right? And I said, yeah, I do. And they said to me, if you guys had not helped me with resources and provided drop-in wellness, childcare, I would have never been able to graduate my recovery classes and get this job. And so we know the work we're doing matters.
Yeah, that goes from the housing, from Lindsey and I both sit on the housing trust, and we are creating a waitlist for individuals. So I did put your name down as an agency we will reach out to if we have housing stock become available.
Wonderful.
We appreciate that. We do have currently 13 units, so.
Wow. We're noticing that that is increasing, like so many people are coming in saying, hey, we can't even afford our deposit. And then on top of putting the deposit down, it still might be two or three months before they even get into a place. So, yeah, that is definitely a need. So with all that being said, we discussed with the churches, with some other organizations, trying to get some funding specifically for the indigent funds, to be able to have, you know, one space where anybody calls, it can be the churches, it can be the police, it can be anybody, and those people would have their name in the database, and we could say, okay, so-and-so, $500 for their deposit for their rent, so-and-so got money for food, whatever that is, it would be in that database. The first time, we'll give it to them no matter what. The second time they come back, if it's the same person, we say, hey, you know, we helped you, now we need you to get some services. Like, you lost your job three times, let's give you skills on how not to lose your job. Or let's get you some insurance because you've been ill, or whatever that need is, the second time they come back, we want to be able to look in the system and go, who helped them? Who referred them? Here's what we did for them, here's what happened. So they're getting that follow-through, you know? And then we're not going, okay, 12 people helped the same family from Cascade all the way to New Meadows. Everybody would know, they could call us, we'd check our database for that specific person. Let's just say Oak Creek Church, they were, they referred us somebody. We wouldn't say no if they referred them. Like, it's not, we don't want control of the funding, we just want it to be where the same person isn't getting help in the same time period from 12 different organizations. So being able to kind of funnel that and be that one-stop, all churches, all police, doesn't matter who you are, can call us and say, has this person been seen? We'll have everybody sign a confidentiality agreement. It'll be so, all people get served. We're not using all the funds on two or three families. It's spread out, and they're asking for help and we're giving it to them by saying, you need to learn these skills. So, um, you want to talk a little bit about the money?
So the money from the county that we received has gone toward seeding our program and really giving us a physical space. As we were talking about this necessary crisis response, as Tracy touched on, one of our big concerns was, oh, we do not want those crises right by where we have our children. People entrust us with their children and we see all kinds of things. We see people coming down off meth, we see people feeling suicidal, and we wanted that to be separate. And so thanks to that money, we were able to pay the deposit on the space, and it's in the opposite side of the building. So all of our youth programs and our counseling that's not related to crisis is upstairs in one corner, and then the rest of it is downstairs tucked away on the opposite end. So it gives us really great separation. So we were able to pay for a year's rent, pay that deposit, have utilities there. And what I found, often, if one entity, one organization gives you a chance, everybody seems to kind of want to jump in, and from that, it has just taken off. Doug, if you'd go to the next slide, please. So we got, you guys started it for us, and we're so thankful. Because from there, we got a very generous grant from the Lorimer Cunningham Foundation, the Central District Health Grant that we are a sub-grantee of, the Health Resources and Services Administration has helped fund some of our staffing and some of those things. We've gotten funds from the McCall Rotary Club, we've gotten funds from STIBNIGHT, the Blue Cross Employee Foundation, and we're really working on building up this insurance reimbursement model. The thing we are finding that is interesting, when I talk to our billing specialists all the time, getting reimbursed for crisis codes is difficult. Not everyone's health insurance covers mental health to begin with, so that's the initial struggle. And then second of all, it is, are they going to cover that crisis and what code are they going to cover the crisis for? And some plans just flat-out will not. But we're really hoping as we continue to go and grow and build this program and help everybody, that there will be a trend in insurance providers really taking those crisis calls seriously. Because I think, especially if you're paying for an hour of crisis counseling versus three days minimum inpatient, if I were an insurer, I would look at that and say, that's great cost savings, I would way rather pay for that service than three days of that. So we're hoping that's going to continue to build, and we are continuing to work on additional funds. We partnered with Central District Health and Central Idaho Counseling to apply for a multi-year grant that would help cover this crisis response program ongoing and allow us to bring in additional clinicians as support in some of those higher-risk situations, so two at a time could work. So we are really excited about how you guys kind of started that snowball effect for us, for our crisis response to take off.
And right now, we have a 24/7. Even Benchmark, we mentioned them earlier, theirs is only until 11:00 PM. So the police, families, anybody can call us 24 hours a day, and one of our staff licensed counselors is on call to meet those people where they're at. So we're really excited. The police have recently dropped off a couple different families so we could help them, get them into some services, get them into housing or hotels, just to keep them safe. So I think it has helped decrease other organizations' caseloads.
I'm impressed how you guys have picked up the ball and ran with it, especially with this funding part, you know, thinking out of the box and finding other avenues. That's impressive. That's creating a sustainable future for your...
And I think going to that, you know, having the ability to bill insurances, I think, has really helped us tremendously. I mean, it is very difficult, there's a lot of data behind it and a lot of paperwork, but it has really helped bring in those additional funds when we do have the families that have the insurance that will bill. I met with the Blue Cross Foundation, they're trying right now to have a similar model to Medicaid for services like case management, CBRS. As of this moment, Medicaid is the only one that'll cover those services. So that's something that, you know, we're really looking for additional funding for as well. When we see a family that can't get their needs met, and they can meet with somebody for one hour a week that'll connect them and link them to these other services, it's strengthening them. And then it's an additional, strengthening our community and getting them back into asking a pastor or asking a teacher for that help, and then they're kind of back to that baseline of, you know, being able to function on their own.
And it allows us to keep people in the community who might otherwise leave, because our goal is always, obviously, in mental health, we are aware, there are times where they need a higher level of care and they need to leave, and we support that wholeheartedly. But for as many situations as possible, our goal is to say, here's the help you can get here, here's who you can reach out to here, let's fill out this housing application, let's fill out a job application, and do everything we can to help them feel supported in our community and stay in the community.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
It really is a life-changing difference in our community. When we're at commissioner conferences and other things, I talk to other people, and our level of service in this community is much higher than in other communities. Thank you, Tracy, I think you started that.
Madam Chairman, commissioners, if I can kind of elaborate, there was a matter on the agenda today, a workshop to discuss potential indigent applications that Ignite Idaho has a willingness to kind of take that over for the county. As the commissioners are aware, we currently have individuals seeking rental assistance, other type of power assistance through Valley County, and I think Ignite Idaho has a desire to potentially take that over, and I think that they wanted the commissioners to potentially discuss the indigent dollars that had been collected or levied over the years for indigent services that can no longer be levied for, but there is a remaining pool of those funds, potentially having Ignite Idaho take those funds over and work on the program that, the indigent program that we are currently have. So I don't know if we have enough time, probably not today, but they wanted to, sorry for using this plant, the seed with the commissioners, that this is a desire that they have, to potentially take that program over for Valley County, and I think they would be inclined to have additional conversations in the future to see if that is a possibility.
Absolutely. So we did mention it about a year ago, and what we wanted to show is partnership. We wanted to show organizations that are willing to work with us, the police department, the churches, sheriffs, all of these different entities are saying, hey, if we could do this, the food banks, to be able to call Ignite and say, this person needs this, how much funding do we have, what do we need to do to get them the service? If it's a deeper need, then we can immediately put them into services and help that money go further. With that being said, we would put together like an advisory board, so it might be somebody from each church, maybe, you know, sheriff, police, school district, there'd be, you know, eight or 10 people on there that would say, okay, no one person's going to say yes or no, there's no yes or no, it's how do we work together as a team to make sure the whole community gets their needs met?
I think it's a great idea. We don't have it on as an action item to discuss today, but I also...
It's just a workshop, Madam Chairman, yeah, how we put it on the agenda today, just to see if the commissioners would even be inclined to have further discussions on.
That'd be awesome.
I think the legality side of things we need to address, we need an MOU, we need something, because we're giving taxpayer funds to a nonprofit, that's a specialty item that we will have to work through. I think, you know, with an MOU and an outline of what services you're going to be offering, what county expectations were, then, because these are taxpayer dollars, so we have to, you know, prove that for the annual audit probably. But yeah, I think the conversation is very worthy of being had. I have had a lot of those concerns as people come in, you know, how are they asking us for things, are they asking other people for the same things, you know, how do we do that?
Some are and some are.
Part of it is, you know, when they come forward and ask them for stuff, to me, it's like, you people are, in Neil's realm, you people are more well-equipped, understand their needs, assess what's going on. Neil's not, you know, can't speak for Sher, you're a good cat, but it, you guys are so...
$200,000 that is left, and then commissioners, you are the, there is, commissioners do not have the ability to levy for indigent any longer due to Medicaid expansion. That, I guess, that was taken off the county's responsibility to pay those medical claims. So once that money is gone, it's gone.
Well, it can also be a fund, it can seed a revolving fund.
Yes, that's exactly what we were thinking.
Correct.
So I guess the question that I would have is, as we move forward, is there anything that we will be legally obligated to pay versus giving it to Ignite to do that? So that's...
Commissioners, the only thing that I can see potentially would be the cremations. I think that is one matter we're, I don't know if this group would want to take on cremations, that is a responsibility, I believe, that the commissioners have. If the coroner indicates that he has, saying he, because our current coroner is Mr. Carver, and Mr. Carver has explored, or explored all family members that potentially could pay for a cremation, if the individual that is deceased does not have the funding available, I do think that that responsibility is on the...
Doug, let's put this on for an action item here in the next, you know, month anyway. But in the meantime, get some legal input on what an MOU would look like, you know, what our legal responsibilities would be, that we would need some remaining funds as we move forward and do what's right, you know, for the community.
That's great.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate this opportunity. We've seen a need, and we know that, you know, when they come to you, sometimes it, I mean, it takes a while for them to even get that need met. So to be able to have that quick response and to determine what their other needs are, so important. All right, well, thank you guys so much.
All right, good to see you. Thanks for all you do.
Was this, uh, was this Strike Tuesday? Is that what they...
We all wanted to match, we called each other last night. We are matching. Any other questions?
Commissioner Caldwell, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Just want to say thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
You guys are awesome, thank you.
...project with our engineer. We'll wait for just a minute, because I don't think this will take very long, so let Commissioner Thompson get back here.
Madam Chair, this is a contract, a crushing contract, that essentially our superintendent, Jeff McFadden, would have been here, however, he has been detained by other snowmatters, if you understand it. So, but I wanted to just let you know that we ended up receiving two bids. One was irregular because they did not provide their performance bond. And so the other one, we received the bid, it was slightly higher from our budget, so we essentially negotiated under our budget for the crushing component. Last year, just so you know, that was the same contractor. Last year, contract was $245,000. This year, we negotiated $296,000, just right under our $300,000 budget. This is to provide about 25,000 tons of three-quarter road mix and then 15 tons of four-inch minus. So the other contract was two years ago, and so I think we do it about every other, every two years. So we'll get enough to provide a stockpile for us to proceed on with the necessary sub-bass and base material that we need.
I wonder, is there a project that you know that this is going to, or this is just stockpiling?
Just stockpiling it throughout the county.
Where's the Good Pit located?
So that is over off of 55 and, I want to say E.
Oh, so that's that one back up there on Hillside.
I read that state pit.
If you have any questions or anything that you want to ask me about, but I do, would like to get it signed, and once we sign it, we'll send it to the contractor with the correct dollar amounts, and then we'll submit it to Doug's staff for finalization.
We did get the bond and everything's.
On this one, we did, yeah. But the other one, we couldn't accept their bid because they didn't provide their bond.
Any other questions?
I don't.
Not, I would entertain.
I don't have any names.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
I would move that we approve the Good Lane Pit Crushing Contract, Pit Rock Crushing Project as presented.
Second.
I moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, so that is, do you have any updates for us other than that?
Not really, but I'm, I'll, I guess, refrain myself until later, because I'm gonna, it's gonna be a long session, so.
Sounds good. All right, that being the last item on our morning agenda, we will recess for a little.